Did you all pass like that Omega harsh business law you were talking about last week or implemented rather max?
Uh, I don't want the police to charge anyone with that until I have the, we have the means to give people an actual business license, but it did pass.
Is it?
Yeah, we're just not putting it, we're not putting it in yet.
Oh, okay.
There's a.
Oh, she brings city council documents, though I think it was, it was proposed. Yeah. So you can read it.
Let's get started. Welcome to the 10th council meeting of, of heck. Uh. Any news? Any important news?
I just have general updates. I am not presenting anything this week. Uh, for civilian oversight board, I've managed to talk to three of the four people. I have not been able to locate Sonny Brooks yet, but um, Ursula, who is filming coincidentally right now, she's uh, she's gonna help get the word out on uh, complaints if anyone does, does wish to do those, but myself, uh, Archie and Owen, we've been telling people if they got, uh, you know, civilian complaints against the PD, how to, how to action those on the civil side if they don't want to go internal with them.
Okay. Um, any of, anyone else with general news? Question mark?
Um, I mean, we talked about most of the quota stuff with you and uh, Siobhan and Michael yesterday. I had a general question and I don't know if anyone has experienced this, but I was told that uh, grime drivers are going to Polito, delivering everything and then leaving their trailer on the side of the road en masse.
Yeah.
Um.
That's why we stole all of those there.
Yep. Uh, I was gonna propose a, an illegal dumping thing today.
I'm on board with that because.
Can we, can we track the trailers?
No, someone tried to see if you can get a plate read on it. And for some reason, when it's detached, you cannot do that. That would make it a lot easier. I promise you.
Well, they're, they're, they're dumping them in the same spot like that shoulder leading into Polito.
Right.
In front of the farm. So you just gotta sit, sit there and then watch some dumb motherfucker do it.
Okay.
Oh, 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 cause they want to speed down the highway faster without their fucking trailer.
Yeah, I didn't put two and two together that the amount of uh, 16 wheelers without the, the, the trailer on it that I see going south on popular towards the docks, but now it makes perfect sense that.
Are they just doing it to get better mileage on the freeway?
They want to get back faster.
Yep. Yup.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm all for getting that pretty harshly.
My wife and I went on a um, a grime ride along, uh, probably about a week ago now. And that was the last part of our grimer was dumping the trailer.
So you saw it in real time?
Yeah.
All right. Good to know.
Okay, um, uh, PD liaison Dakota, do you have anything to present to the council of eight?
I think the majority of it was us discussing the quota system yesterday. And then honestly, the big thing I had was that being told by people that uh, grime beds are being detached in random places. And if we could get a charge for that. But apparently you're already well aware of it.
Yeah.
Please Dakota.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
I have someone uh, that's gonna speak here. Come on in.
Howdy y'all.
This is Momo. I met him at the sanitation yard uh, last night.
Hi, Momo.
Hi, Momo.
Hello, everyone.
Uh, we'll start with Momo. Fuck it. Uh, and then we can get to the uh, illegal dumping. Hello, Momo.
How are you guys today?
Doing well.
All right.
You are being filmed, of course, because the uh, the council meetings are now uh, filmed live. So if there's anything, if you would like to not speak, uh, that can also be arranged.
No, that's absolutely fine. Uh, I consent to the, to the recording.
Cool. Uh, what did, what did you want to talk to about the council or talk to the council about?
I wanted to speak to the council of, about the wonderful DOC that they've uh, put into place. That was, that was, that was sarcasm coming from a criminal's point of view. It really, it's, it's terrible for us. It's miserable. It's absolutely dreadful. We hate it. It's, it's, it's the most scary thing in the world. We, we really, really, really do not like going to prison. I have completely rethought.
Wait, you don't like prison?
I.
Oh, I used to enjoy prison. I used to enjoy prison. It used to be a time, it used to be a time for me to think and ponder on my, with myself.
Like a meditative retreat?
Exactly. Away from everybody, away from all the, all the crazies. But nope, now I can't do that anymore. Now, now it's, it's, it's trying to escape at all costs or don't go to, or don't do crime. I've resorted to not doing crime just because I am completely alone in the city.
Oh, my goodness. I know. Terrible.
Council of eight, we might have solved crime, guys.
Hey, fucking did it.
Nice.
Momo, can you talk about uh, like what goes down in Bowling Brook when uh, it's staffed?
Yeah, yeah.
Look us through what you wrote in your testimonial, which is in my chief of staff notes if anybody wants to pull it up.
I haven't heard of many people that are actually in there. So yeah.
Okay, so let's think about it this way. All right. We all, we're all humans here. We all have free will. We all have something that we identify ourselves by, right? Which is our names. I stand proudly behind my name. I feel like my name defines who I am. And it's, you know, it's a staple to, to who we all are. And there, that is gone. You are known and only known as maggot. You lose all sense of dignity. You do not treat you as a human. They tell you how to think. They tell you what to do, how to act. They tell you what to breathe, what to wear. You know how miserable that is?
I couldn't imagine.
Dehumanizing.
Terrible.
It, it, and then above all else, they torture you and beat you. They stabbed me. Left me to bleed, pushed me out of the prison. And EMS didn't even want to assist.
Did they leave you in the parking lot?
Yes.
They're not supposed to do that, are they?
Oh, there's the proof. There you go. Now they're not meant to do.
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll talk to them about making sure you don't get treated. They should try to treat you.
Nope. Stabbed, left me to bleed out and forced out.
Leaving you in the parking lot for EMS to potentially respond to.
Yeah, that's pretty bad.
No bueno. Uh, well, I'll talk.
I've gotten a couple of complaints about uh, them just constantly dumping people in the parking lot and calling EMS.
Yeah.
It's happened quite a bit.
I know this was two weeks ago, but did, did uh, did EMS agree to basically like not treat them unless they're on the highway or some shit? Like what was the?
The response, response that I got, because I was still, I made my own 911 call. It was, we are not allowed to respond to the prison.
Right. That's, that's why I'm asking.
I guess, yeah. I told them, uh, I told them what we talked about.
The boundary line now, I guess, just for like my knowledge.
I don't think there is necessarily a boundary line. Um, but I, I expressed that if they think they are at risk, they do not have to respond there. And I guess they took that very literally. Hey, that's, that's on them.
I mean, fair, fair enough for the parking lot. They got like line of sight on them basically.
Uh, I have, I have heard that their medical facilities cannot treat uh, bleeding wounds.
Yes.
Which is a huge problem. So maybe uh, I, I know we said we wouldn't help them, but giving them some tourniquets might not be untoward.
We are, so that's, that's a tough one. Um, discussions that I've had, I don't think it would be a viable option. Those are um, very um, very good medical equipment. They're, they're uh, very sought after, highly sought after. Um, putting them in a place where they could be so easily uh, taken essentially, uh, because I guess karma and Bobby aren't the biggest threats. They could be beaten up for it is a, is a major concern. Essentially, unfortunately, I know it's not a, a happy answer, but it is um, either they have to get treatment from the hospital, they are someone who can travel there, or uh, they have to try to not get injured, uh, because they, the local doctors can't help them until they're incapacitated.
Okay.
I think if you give them the tools necessary that they need for medical treatment, it's only gonna uh, push them further to treat us more like shit and dehumanize us. Are you, are you saying?
This, I was in the prison a couple of days ago. Uh, it's hard to get less human than that, Momo.
Oh, yeah, it sounds like it.
I just don't even think we should be pushing the envelope with any kind of equipment.
I, I wa, I, I watched, I watched someone in Bowling Brook, AKA Dogtown, cut off some guy's arms.
Oh, my God.
And then attached them to his body.
Huh. That's terrifying. Okay.
Not die jobu. Oh, I mean, not die jobu if it were on the streets. In Bowling Brook, it's perfectly fine.
Of course, of course.
Um, I am personally for them having at least a small stock of tourniquets, just so that there, there aren't any like, like I, I, when I went to prison, there was a cop out front and um, they tried to, like, I was going in there to inspect the place and there was a cop out front talking to them through the gate near the DMZ. Uh, and then they opened it to let me in with my wife. And uh, they tried to like smoothly like usher the cop in as well. And we're like, all right, all right, come on, guys. Come on, everyone. They're like, come through the gate. They tried to like trick her into coming inside so they could fucking take her shit. Um, my point is, um, if they have, you know, like maybe like five, six, seven tourniquets a day, um, it will potentially prevent EMS from being, you know, maybe just straight up grabbed from the parking lot if they decide to go there. Or grabbed from anywhere else and robbed or, you know, attacked for their supplies.
So the concern we run into is the medical supplies are very carefully tracked and assigned to individuals. Um, we buy them from Marcus. Uh, he, he stamps our state ID on them so that we can very carefully track them to make sure if they're robbed or given out. Uh, we know who they're coming from. They're very regulated in that regard. Um, there's also the issue of uh, they don't have medical training. They could potentially cause more issues if they're applying the tourniquets to people without a level of knowledge there. Uh, not to mention, because they're not medically trained, they're, they might struggle to apply them to people. So they might just have to let someone try to reply a tourniquet to themselves, which is extremely dangerous. Um, there, there's a lot of reasons why. One, having them out and about is a major risk and two, I just, it, it could also cause more problems.
And given the fact that they've already been pushing the boundaries and Alan has had to have multiple conversations with them, I don't really feel like they have shown the level of competency or trust that uh, having, you know, that kind of equipment, you know?
Yeah, I just, I just hope these guys don't wise up, go on YouTube and look up how to make a tourniquet.
They could. Um, that's something, I mean, if they want to order some off wish.com or something, but uh, but we, our specialized stuff, I just wouldn't feel comfortable giving to them.
Just wait till they learn you can make napalm at home.
Yeah.
Oh, my God. Okay. Momo, any uh, final notes on uh, your experience at Bowling Brook?
Yeah, the conversation that I was trying to have was very, it went south. Uh, I, I thought you guys, you know, were gonna be sentimental or try to advocate for the people who are being sent up there, but apparently that's exactly what you guys were going for. So if that's what you guys are going for, and it is obviously I've decreased the crime rate, then I am very happy for you guys.
Well, you said it yourself.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go cry.
Prison's not supposed to be fun.
It's okay. Just don't go to prison again. Congratulations on your new claim life, sir.
Yeah, congratulations.
If you want a job as a doctor or something, let us know.
I can't, I can't. I'm a felon. There, I can't get that job.
Get expunged. You're fine. There you go.
She's not doing crime anymore. I shouldn't be so hired.
Nice. Hey.
Anyway, yeah, hey, guys, everyone. It's working.
Yeah.
As intended.
It's working. Yeah, great.
I never understood the mentality that prison was supposed to be a good thing.
I know. Yeah. It's uh, it's just good news for us.
When he first started telling me his story, um, you know, I was trying to be sympathetic, but when he got to the part where he's like, I don't even want to do crime anymore. I'm like, so it's working. And I kind of gave it all away. I was very excited.
Okay, uh, enlightening. Uh, Molten doesn't have anything. Dakota doesn't have anything. Uh, Cantor, you have anything you want to present to the council of eight?
Uh, there is the uh, drug schedule me and Siobhan worked on. If you're ready with that, uh, Siobhan, we could go through.
Yeah. I just also want to give like full clarity that this was adopted from something that Norman Adams had sent me.
Ew.
It, it was good stuff. I mean, I, I adopted it. I, I pretty much paraphrased almost everything and removed a lot. And then Cantor and I worked together on a bunch of stuff as well to update it and change it, but just wanted full transparency.
Yeah, uh, Norman brought it to me as well. Um, which is how I initially pitched it in the first place. Um, so I, I'll be, you know, I didn't know much about scheduling drugs and how it works outside of here, but looking into it, I think it's a good idea. So we've ironed it out. Um, we've made a couple of changes from his initial pitch. Um, my pitch was three schedules instead of two. With the idea that schedule one being the harshest level of drugs would only be felony possession, essentially like heroin is right now. Any amount is, is a felony. Schedule one would be bad enough that any amount is felony. So it shouldn't even make things too, too much harder. In fact, it would make things technically easier that anything in that schedule one would only be one singular charge. And then the actual drugs and which section they're in can be changed. That could be like, you know, pitch to the council by whoever is medical liaison at the time. Um, to, hey, you know, I don't think this is harmful as we once thought. We could change this category, things like that. I'll be, y'all read over it, letting us know if you have any questions.
Let's see.
I also touched briefly on legal pharmaceuticals. Um, let's uh, somewhat related to things like a nexus back in the day, Michael. Um, essentially put something uh, that LSMG oversees that so that y'all don't run into cops trying to arrest you for transporting drugs again. Uh, we can like put our stamp of approval on it and then they can get fucked.
The fuck is the juice?
Uh, a drug back in the day that uh, it was a giant shot of adrenaline made from human kidneys. Uh, that would restart your heart, but could cause severe injuries down the line, like it could cause heart attacks.
Uh, can we just take this time just to get rid of all the, the drugs that aren't on the street currently? I mean, I, I.
I'd be down for that. Yeah.
This is my opinion, but I, I don't like future-proofing drugs into schedules. Like I, I think if you have a, a catchall on class three or like a generic drug, that'll give police something to charge in the future. And then from their investigation and their pitch to the council or to the judicial, it could be added as a specific schedule.
And the medical liaison at the time can take it to the hospital to do some uh, you know, proper checks on it. Yeah. So uh, in doing this, um, when we uh, if this is approved and we make this change and the charges for possession are removed, we could uh, get rid of all the ones that we haven't seen around uh, and only assign the ones.
I want to add your, remove all the ones.
So this is a good way to clear it up. Perfect. Okay.
Yeah.
The warden's here to file a complaint against the police.
I feel like.
Come on in, Baron. What, what's up with the fucking condom hat?
I added in schedule three, just generic drug, just uh, that'd be the catchall. Anything the police want to feel is articulate.
Oh, lovely to see you, Bobby.
Yeah, that, that's fair.
We're gonna, we're gonna finish talking about this uh, scheduling first, uh, Baron, and then we can uh, hear your complaint.
Sure. Sounds good. All right. Um, we had uh, marijuana schedule three for I think obvious reasons, but you know, the cultivation, the uh, felony intent to distribute, all that will still apply as is if someone's fucking around to that level, you know, those are still the same. This is only for possession. Um, and then, yeah, as we go through and figure out what is actually applicable, uh, if this is approved, we can decide which schedule to throw them in. Um, so uh, it's pretty simple. Uh, there's felony and misdemeanor possession of schedule two and three, uh, and then felony possession only of schedule one. I also have a spreadsheet created with all of the times funds and felony and misdemeanor amounts of each drug. So if this is approved, we can, you know, plug that in pretty quickly and easily and figure out what times and funds we want to land on.
Also, the language here about oxy and weed being for medical.
Uh, that is the intention behind the lower scheduling is that they uh, have potential medical use, which is why they are a lower schedule. It's not that it is legal if it has medical use. It is, it is a lower charge because of that fact.
So doctors are gonna try to prescribe marijuana?
No, that's not what this is. Uh, schedule three is just a lower time of fun. Um, there is still no legal amount of any of these drugs.
Eh.
Yeah, no, we're not doing that.
I.
That would be a whole other page.
Would you, would you be more comfortable from a judicial standpoint, Crane, if it was just based off of the public health risk and there was no mention of?
And there was no mention of that. We could, we could get rid of that part. Yeah. Just lesser public health risk.
I, I still, I still don't. I still don't agree with the thing overall. I think it causes issues with tracking drugs in terms of charges and reports. Uh, I, I just, I don't think it's the right way to go. I have no problem with it. If you guys want to remove or you think it's a good idea to remove the drugs that we don't see around the streets anymore, but uh, I don't think that the, there's an overwhelming benefit to creating the classes that overrides the inconvenience and confusion it would cause when it comes to tracking, you know, drugs at a glance.
Are you thinking something like when you're trying to find three incidences of felony possession in terms of distribution for drug trafficking? Is that what you're thinking of?
Yeah, because if you, if you want like felony possession of marijuana to bolster your two instances of sale of drugs.
Right.
And you just, what would you do? Just search for class three possession? Then you'd have to open up each report and find out which ones are weed?
Search the marijuana tag and hope that the German has everything programmed correctly.
Yeah.
Uh, PD could also put tags in reports for
Right.
Class one, two, or uh, schedule one, two, and three to ease the burden.
Or even a tag for the specific drug if needed.
Get tagged for the specific drug.
We could do both actually, because then you can just tag them simultaneously and they should in, in execution, come right up for the report.
And then if there, if any possession and other charges uh, to do with like weed, for example, um, have been charged against a person, you can search for the weed tag and you'll see the entirety of the weed related crimes, no matter whether they are a specific possession charge or not.
Obi, what did you just do?
What?
You, you, you say that this isn't legalizing anything, but it also says this establishes the Los Santos Medical Group as the authority on any pharmaceutical medications that will be legal possessed with valid prescription.
Yes, like back in the day, we had uh, antidepressants and things through Nexus. It's, it's for things like that, not a, anything, um, we can reword that too, if you want. My thoughts are any drug uh, is brought to the council um, for approval. So we can, we can reword this. So like, say, uh, you know, a drug that should be, you know, a pharmaceutical company pops up, they're coming through, um, they're coming through the hospital. The medical liaison can bring it here and say, uh, look, like uh, th- this is not something that has to be scheduled. This is not something that legal, like, are you guys good for that? But uh, I'm assuming it would have to go through a business approval anyway. So I mean, it's safeguarding for those because uh, that happened in the past. We ran into things like uh, Betalife. Had no communication with the hospital in any way. They just randomly had drugs that were illegal.
If this does go through, I, I still think there should be a felony possession even for a uh, schedule three? Wait, is that?
There is felony possession of schedule three.
There is still, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. What's, what's the, oh, there's only not a misdemeanor. Okay.
Yes, there was not a misdemeanor for, for schedule one is my thoughts. It would be like heroin where any amount.
Any amount, yeah.
Uh, that's good.
Let me change this wording a little bit to add the uh, which will be approved by the council through the medical liaison part, so that it.
I thought we had that part, Cantor. I might have accidentally deleted something when I was trying to get the table that you sent me in here and it was just not, it was not cooperating. It was not cooperating. Yeah, they do know.
If it gets approved, I'll just write it all out. That's okay.
You're an angel. I also hope if you need it.
Hell, yeah. Thank you. Uh, let me, let me cook on that. Hold up.
Nice, Bobby.
So you guys, you guys wanting to call this to a vote or?
Uh, she's reworking the language with us.
I'm happy with it. Anyone has, yeah, let me, let me finish it up.
All right.
Okay. Now it establishes the city council as the authority on that as well as an extra safeguard, because I can see your concern there. Um, are there any other questions on it uh, to our net before we go to roll?
I mean, I'd, you know, I have the same positions, but I think I'm overruled. So it is what it is. We should vote.
Should I start the fight? I'll, I mean, I, I think I vote yes. I, I put in a lot of effort too. Anyone else? Uh, anyone need? Nay other than uh, Craig?
Uh, hold on.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just rereading the uh, final form.
Yeah. And if you're not happy with that wording, let me know. I think that uh, I think that sums up a solution, but uh, I'm happy to adjust.
I mean, I, I just, I, I I think, I think that you're essentially taking one factor that's used in legislating punishments for drugs and making it the factor. So like, for example, uh, marijuana is a schedule three drug.
Yeah.
So it'll have the least uh, times for possession.
Right.
But it also is probably the biggest money-making drug. So in, if we're trying to deter the ultimate purchase or retention and possession of it, we're not really deterring it because it's going to be a schedule three. So it'll be, you know, the lowest, you know, punishments for drug possession.
We could also have it at schedule two currently, if there's a concern that it is a major issue.
But that's what I mean is like, so the, the scheduling says that the way that we're doing this is health and safety risk. So it says it establishes based on high public health, known benefits, incidences of abuse.
Yeah.
But there's no consideration in there that talks about deterrent needs, impact on society in terms of violence associated with the drug. And like I said, these are all factors, like when we create charges for new drugs, we take, you know, the medical professional field, we take, you know, law enforcement, we take, you know, financial things into effect. And it seems like we're ignoring the other elements and just replacing that with the healthcare perspective being the perspective.
We can uh, we can expand on it. I'm completely okay with that. Uh, it just says outlined, um, it was set as public health risk. Uh, if you want it to, um, if you want it to be expanded to take in numerous factors, um, we can uh, we can word it very specifically, uh, that it is brought to the council, both legal and illegal drugs after the uh, after all the checks through the hospital, uh, and then that is determined based on a wider factor with things like the PD liaison with uh, with the head of bar and everything. So it's not just the health risk, it's also the public safety, all the, what the cops actually say. It can, it can be based on wider factors. We can, we can expand on that absolutely. And it doesn't negate the. And it doesn't negate the other charges, right? Like I stated, um, it doesn't negate cultivation of marijuana. It doesn't negate felony possession with intent to distribute. Um, it doesn't negate any of that. This is just. Just possession. I do understand this, you know, this is your field on this, so I, I absolutely respect your opinion on it. Um. I do think this is a good idea, um, but any, any feedback you have, uh, you know, is helpful.
Nikodo, one of my concerns when this was discussed two weeks ago was uh, bozo cops and, and processing. Do, do you think? That under the way it's worded, cops can still. Process, charge, investigate, blah, blah, blah. You think they, they could all still do that? Effectively, shall we say?
Uh, I think if it's simplified under these three schedules, that shouldn't be an issue. Um. I think to maybe what the chief justice was saying is like, right now, the only prob, it's not even a problem. It's just. The amount of drugs that are out or the differing types of drugs that are in circulation right now are very minute. Like the main thing we find people with right now is marijuana and. I guess moonshine to a certain extent, but that's obviously different, right?
Right.
Um, but like I said, I, I personally don't think any officers would have issue with this, but uh. I don't have the perspective of the DOJ from a, you know, a higher up uh, standpoint. So I'm. Open to other people's perspectives.
Of course, okay. I mean, it, it gives us the opportunity, right, to, to clean up all these charges because you're not wrong. A lot of this just. Isn't seen uh, at all right now. There's a. There's a lot of things that might not be relevant at all currently in the penal code. So starting. This feels like starting off in the right foots, mate, but I am also uh, just. A, a doctor, I have probably the least horse in this race out of some of the people here. Uh. So, you know. I do appreciate opinion. But uh. Yeah, anyone else have anything else?
Oh, did you finish the updates?
Uh, I added the part where uh, it states the.
Council approval.
Legal uh, medications require council approval. I might just. Work on, if I can reword the whole thing, I kind of have to go in and change it up. And put everything under council approval instead of that specific part. Oh yeah, oh, that's already fixed up. So we'll pass.
It looks like it's there.
Yeah, it's there. Okay, perfect. So it says in any place.
Do you want to put this to a vote now?
Uh, yeah, um, we'll have to vote on where drugs go either way. Keep in mind, so this is just the base framework of the scheduling we're voting for.
So wait, whenever there's a new drug, you're saying the city council votes to classify it?
Yes.
I'm saying, uh, well, the way I have it in there is by default, it's classified as a three because.
Yeah, it's already in there, but we can bump it up. We can adjust it.
Yeah, but if you want to specifically name it in there with, you know, then that's what the council would kick in.
So we'd have to figure out what amount is felony or misdemeanor stuff anyway to get it in there.
So I just have a clarifying question. When it says lower incident of abuse, does that mean like less instances of people being found with it?
Less addictive.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So they, they don't abuse it, yeah.
Yes, it's not a less amount of being found with, and we can, we can change uh, like Crane was asking for, we can change the. Uh, descriptors. That, that was just kind of a quick summary of what. We looked for, but we can change what we are looking for if uh. You know, depending on like what we want to see essentially, we can do that now or in the future.
What if every time a new drug's found on the street, we bring it here on Saturdays and then we all take?
That would be an ideal case study.
I've been sober for four years and that ain't changed.
Except for that.
No one will sell me cocaine. This is fucked up.
I uh, I only drink unfortunately. I'm not a drug guy.
Okay, so. All the cool people in this room will do the drugs and you guys can trip sit us.
It's important job.
It won't be illegal yet if we haven't shit. Wait, under Molson's planet, it would be.
Still be, yeah.
Okay, well.
I think the uh, my only initial thing here is and uh, it's like, if we're going to take into account. Uh, how often people are caught with a certain drug as to, as far as the scheduling, like right now, if that was taken into account. Marijuana would be schedule one because it is the drug that we catch people with by far the most because.
Public health risk is vague. Uh, if you think that that is a current significant public health risk. Um, you know, that, that is something to keep in mind, right? It's one of those things that we, we can use for uh, numerous regards. I, I don't think we should be schedule one admittedly. I think uh. Like it's weed, it's pretty, pretty chill, but that's a personal thing. Uh, you could absolutely make that argument is what I'm saying. It's not just public health risk like you smoke one joint and it'll kill you, you know, it's like um, if people are fucking like shooting each other over weed or uh. Or you know what it's called in like gangs or something, that, that's still like public health risk to me.
I think that's what I meant. Like if people are willing to.
Yeah.
Flee from a, a incident or a traffic stop or something like that because they have weed on them and then they run somebody over. I know that's not necessarily like in the, in the spirit of health risk, right? You're talking about the effect the drug has on the person.
It can be honestly, it can't, it doesn't have to just be the effect that it has on a person. Uh, we can take into account the entire picture of how it affects um, the city when we're making those determinations. And adjust it as needed, right? Even if we did say, like you said, make it schedule one currently. Um, if it, you know, down the line, doesn't need to be, we can adjust that.
Yeah, I think as long as the language is uh, clear about. Uh, public health risk, uh, along with. How often the PD are, are catching said drug.
Yeah, if you can think of a, if anyone can think of a better wording, let me know. My kind of thoughts for public health was encompassed all of that, but if, if we want to make it more specific, we can absolutely do that.
That work? Just added on risk of addiction with incident of abuse to try to just delineate them.
Um, so he's also concerned for like the, the public, right? Uh, I think is what um, he was looking for.
Like the public risk?
Yeah, like um, like people shooting each other over it or getting in like gang wars or uh, you know. Driving while high or something like, like the uh. External factors it could cause, I think is what he wanted to like uh. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, I think like, uh, I mean, I'm not opposed to this as long as it's, I mean, it seems like this will be a living, uh. Always adapting document.
Yes, it, this is very much uh, if it's voted in.
I think there's some issues with this, uh.
Pretty tall.
I, I don't think uh, that uh. I don't think that uh, the council should be voting democratically on uh. The harshness of a drug for the purposes of time and fine. Because I, I mean. You know, uh, I think you guys are acting good faith, but someone acting in bad faith could very easily, uh. I don't know.
So my, my thoughts were the time and funds for each schedule are set by the DOJ. We don't touch that. The most we can do is decide which schedule they're in, so it could never be that abused. Like no one can say the fine for marijuana is one dollar. Because that's not our thing to say.
Heroin in schedule three.
We could, yeah, uh, but then the DOJ could look accordingly and up the fine if y'all felt you had to.
Yeah, but then I do that for every schedule three drug.
It, it's true, yeah. Um, I mean, I think it's unlikely that a whole council would vote for heroin to be schedule three. Um, but you know, that, that's the checks I'm thinking, right? We, we don't vote on the time and farm for it. We only go on the schedule. Yeah, it's completely up to y'all where the time and fine is set and if that needs adjusting.
And I'm assuming, or I'm not assuming, but this is uh, in conjunction with the fact that the doctors in the hospital will be testing these things to get more.
To give some actual like feedback, that, that'll be uh, responsibility of the medical liaison to bring here. Uh, to give like actual feedback on the medical effects of the drug.
Yeah, I just can't, that part exists without the other part.
Uh, which part are you concerned about?
I'm saying I had, I'm trying, I'm trying to weigh, what I view is like complications with the legislation or. You know, uh, things to deal with versus what, like the benefit gained, right? So what I'm saying is, is the stuff about the hospital and the medical liaison. Uh, reviewing drugs and testing them and providing data and input and all that, that already happens and can't happen with or without legislation.
Yeah.
Uh, so. Yeah, I don't know.
Like it, so here's my thoughts. It, it can happen now. You're not wrong. But a lot of these drugs, as have been mentioned, aren't around, uh, and there's already pre-established. Times and fines that uh, just, have just kind of been sitting there for a while. I, I made a whole spreadsheet with all the times fines. They're. Yeah, um, it, it's just a chance to reinvigorate it and restart it under uh, whatever we actually find. Uh, and kind of, you know, go through the whole process here and what we find instead of just. And what we've always had, I guess.
Yeah, I defer to all y'all. Uh, I think I heard enough. Uh, who are the gays? Raise your hand, please.
For gays?
Raise your hand if you are a yay.
You're not gonna.
Raise your hand if you are a nay. Uh, six to two, this passes.
I'm sorry, uh, if we get to a point where the implementation becomes, you know, too much of an issue, I mean, we can always revisit it and.
We can always, yeah, we can always revoke, amend, whatever we need to do.
Yes, this, this is very much intended to be living and breathing with the council touches relatively frequently. I just think uh, it'd be nice to be able to handle things as they come here instead of just uh. The same old, so hopefully it works out. I, I like it. Which means if it has passed, we should probably vote on where we're putting weed as a schedule initially.
Well, what are, so we're literally just going to publish what an empty schedule, just marijuana?
We don't have to publish it yet. You know, there's some things that pass but need discussion, right? We've had a few of those, but we can, you know, plan it right now for. When we're ready to.
Well, I'm just asking because you're saying you want to get rid of everything that's not seen right now. So the only thing seen right now is marijuana, so. Are we just making a schedule and it's going to have one drug in it?
Like I said, it doesn't have to be published right now. We could give it, um, no, give it a tiny bit of time, uh, like even just a week or two so we can figure out what uh. What we want to do with this, but um. It's how do y'all feel about it? My pitch wasn't get rid of all of the old ones. Well, it was get rid of all the charges, but it was schedule a couple initially. But then they could be moved around.
Yeah, I thought we were getting rid of all the old stuff.
It's getting rid of all the old charges, but we can schedule some that are, you know, well. Expected and known and stuff, you know, some like just throw heroin.
The more designer ones, like metamorphine and the juice and.
Yeah.
Those, yes, those should all be gone. That was my thoughts, um, was throw the basic very uh. You know, the, the drugs, everyone knows, everyone knows.
Why don't we wait for the hospital to tell us about all the drugs?
Okay, sounds good. Or we can also schedule it with just one. I mean, we can also.
Without the research being done.
On weed? Okay, sure.
No, all of them, you know.
Ooh, I was pitching only the, the uh, posted with the one there, but uh, yeah, we can do the research.
So we, so we are doing the, the weed, nothing else or what, which one?
I was trying to find out what you were comfortable with, um.
I don't see how we could schedule anything other than marijuana right now.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, so do you want to?
That's like saying, I'm going to write my schedule for next month and you just write masturbate every day.
Yeah, I get.
Schedule, is it?
That is not what I'm saying. I am asking, do you want to wait to, to post it now? Or do we want to post it with only the one? That is uh. I'm, I'm fine with give it a bit of time while we figure out where we want marijuana to land. Uh, give it a week or two and then revisit the next meeting on that, uh, and then go from there.
What do you six think?
I think that uh, maybe the hospital can officially run some tests on marijuana and, and unless. Unless the hospital has already done that information, it would be nice to know.
Definitely.
Absolutely. We'll uh, we'll do that. I might have to work with you, Nikodo, on that as well.
Hey, just to get you started from a good place, you should watch a movie called Reefer Madness. Guy got a good info in there.
That scared a lot of, wasn't that a horror movie?
It was a documentary.
Documentary?
Hey, what do you mean? Do your own research, show your mainstream media over there. Okay. Philippa, anything other to, anything else to present?
Uh, no, it was just that. I've uh, had more discussion about the violent charge idea, but I still don't feel comfortable putting. Putting it to paper. If I don't, if I don't have something concrete there.
What's that one? Yeah, what is that?
Uh, we talked about it last time, the idea for uh, a charge for violent acts committed on government property. Uh, essentially, uh, like it would be. A deterrent, but not something nearly as heavy as like medical terrorism or uh, medical discontinuity. It's not intended to be numerous days in prison. It would probably just be a slightly higher fine to say, hey, don't fuck around here. Uh, but you know, lives aren't ruined over it type thing.
Well, I mean, so this is primarily, uh, you're, you're probably worried about the hospital, right?
Yeah, but you know, also city hall and you know, people fucking around too much and MRPD can cause them issues too, you know.
Um. So I mean. Not that this is always the case, but. Wait, I, I'm forward if we put reckless and violent.
Okay, fuck yeah.
There are these people like, you, you should see some people, they had no fucking civil decency. There are these people like, you, you should see some people, they had no fucking civil decency or.
Or like, uh, how Dundee drove a club through the ER.
Raised right, you know, it's like, they just, oh, you know, you guys know how it is. There's always that one person, you know, where these zero class, right? Just absolute bottom barrel trash. They'll do anything, you know, like fucking drive a motorcycle in like a government building. I mean, these people are just unredeemable. I mean, we gotta do something about it.
I didn't say.
Yeah, I caught that Burke guy driving a club into the, the lobby a couple of times as well.
I know Dundee has driven a club in through the car too, uh, through the hospital too. It's, uh, that's crazy. That one's really weird.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Wait. I drive my motorcycle in city hall.
Yeah, I think.
What? Alan, what are you referring to? Alan?
I said what I said. Uh, okay. No more from Philippa. Uh, Alan, do you have anything you'd like to make known at the duck council table and or present? Uh, yeah, uh, we, we gotta stop liking big numbers. Okay, go on. Like we, every charge we keep voting in is like 10 grand. And it's getting kind of absurd for me to like balance how things, for example, right now, uh, stealing a, uh, a turbo i- is actually equal to blowing shit up with explosives. Okay. And so there's two options, either one, uh, we stop going for big numbers. Or two, uh, everything gets big numbers, which I don't think is feasible. So either way, I still need to do like a holistic overhaul on the penal code because just some shit just doesn't make sense in terms of scaling. Yeah, but I'm just offering like caution in general when we're legislating things that we don't, uh, you know, get into this trend of thinking we're hitting this problem real hard with a big fine and then all of a sudden the entire penal code is just big fines for what people are doing right now. Um.
That's fair.
Okay, so, uh, are you gonna go through and, uh, rebalance? I have to basically, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make a spreadsheet and I'm gonna, uh, qualify each crime with like, uh, a severity, right? How much impact it has on society and all that. And then I'm also going to scale like proportionally each fine. And then cross-reference them against the severity and it should give me an idea where the outliers are. Um, and then I'm gonna try to equalize them a little bit better. But I just, in general, you know, I'm just offering caution to this because you know, I'm just, I'm looking at like the stuff that we've put in versus the stuff that was there before. And everything we've put in are, are gigantic outliers. Well, to be fair, there, there was a lot of stuff in the penal code before the council of eight started working, uh, that was overlooked or like left in because not enough oversight was paid to, uh, transitioning the penal code from, you know, before and now. Like it, it was outdated in some respects.
Which was?
There were, there were charges that just didn't apply, like the, the stolen goods one, for example, like the, the valuable goods shit. Right? Um, but you, you were, okay, this, this is another discussion, but I've removed and re-added that charters three times now, so, uh, I was not doing it a fourth time. And I, I'm, I'm just saying that the penal code does need, uh, once over. That's all.
Yeah, and I mean, with the, the implementation of a lot of the charges that we've been putting is because there's been a, a quote unquote epidemic of said crimes. And we were doing it as a, a huge deterrent. And just like we have, you know, we've been lowering the fines, you know, as it became less and less of an issue. And I know specifically with the turbo, we discussed it, uh, to be equate to the value of said equipment because, you know, they would easily take a charge.
Well, we don't do that for any other. Uh, nevermind.
Gotcha. No, no, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I understand.
Where, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say is we're. Yeah, if, if you, if you did that, every single situation would be $20,000 situation. And so that's untenable. So all I'm saying is, uh, I may have to make some changes to shit, uh, and it is what it is. Thank you. That's my, my stuff for the week.
So along that same vein, I know that you, you touched on it briefly in the last meeting, I think it was, um, has there been any more discussions about people that are going, uh, grossly into the negatives?
Uh, yeah, but, uh, I can't talk about it yet.
Okay.
Uh, it will be addressed, uh, but I can't say when or how, so. Stay tuned. Madam Treasurer, do you have anything you'd like to present to the council?
I do not. Uh, I recently had a career change this week and it has, um, messed up my MDT profile, so.
Uh, what happened? Where'd you go from?
Um, I resigned from EMS and I am now a doctor with the hospital. Um, and now all I can see are the medical reports, so.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah. Which I didn't know because I just got hired on yesterday, so, uh, I just realized it today.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, we have more fun.
Honestly, it's just because I hate driving, if I'm gonna be real.
That's true. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, uh, Michael, do you have anything you'd like to present?
I don't have anything to present. I do have a question, uh.
What up?
Who is in charge of EMS? I don't know. Did we talk about this at any council meeting? Like who, who is presenting for the EMS?
It's Happy.
Happy is the.
Franklin Lee, uh, you guys by Happy.
Is the assistant chief.
Yeah, beyond Tim.
Do they go to you in terms of their issues?
I talk happy pretty frequently about, um, updates on things and they, uh, they talk to me about their issues. Uh, he sent me paragraphs of complaints about the adoption law. So he, he knows full well, he can talk to me at any time. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I shut that down pretty hard.
The, it's good to know that the, the chief of, uh, EMS is, uh, writing you not about the state of his job, but rather the state of his, uh, imaginary fake family.
Yeah, yeah. Other than that, uh, we, we've been all the same face with a lot of things. He seems happy with things. Uh, that one, that one not so much.
Okay. Is he happy with things? Because there is rumors going around that EMS is quitting left and right and there's nobody around. Uh, is this just a specific time issue?
Uh, so it's, it's not just a time zone issue. Um, a couple of very key people did leave. Veronica resigned. That was their assistant chief. Then Kiki has now resigned as well, um, just, just a little bit burned out of it. Um, so a big part of their high command have left. But that, those are the people that, uh, were voted in to take the place, uh, Happy and Dion. I think they're both amazing. So, um, you know, it might be an adjustment for a bit, but they, they are both really good. Then there was also, I believe, DeAngelo, who was one of the people who ran for chief, uh, who quit because, uh, I don't know his exact reason, but he, uh, quit right after losing. So there you go.
Uh, um, I've met both, uh, the chief and deputy chief. Uh, they're great. Love them. Um, yeah, uh, also, uh, Kiki and Veronica, they, they quit like a month ago or some shit at this point.
Veronica's was a while ago. Kiki's a little more recent, but it's, it's been a while. I think they've had some staffing issues, uh, to be honest, EMS and doctors always will, um, but, uh, they, they usually do a pretty good job. I haven't heard any major issues coming up and I think, uh, Happy and Dion are pretty good people to be in charge right now.
Yeah, I, I, I know that EMS has been struggling and that's why I diverted more state funds to paying them and whatnot.
Hell, yeah.
Uh, it, I might even look at more in the future just because, um, I'm gonna be honest. If, if there was a job in Los Santos that I would not want to do, it's probably EMS. So, uh, some extra, ex- extra incentive might be nice to, uh, get more medics on the street.
Yeah, I know yesterday, uh, there was an incident where the one EMS that was on duty was, uh, held up at the strawberry gas station and then stabbed. Uh, after being robbed as well, so.
Uh, who was it?
Um, I believe it was Odessa, um, so, uh, and then as far as who did it, I don't know.
Yeah, I meant the victim.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, her name was Odessa. She's okay now, but yeah.
Good.
It, it just, you know, she was already struggling because the city was on fire and she was alone and then that happened to her, so.
Yeah, be careful at strawberry, um, uh, Salib Windar likes to, uh, gritty around that place. It's very dangerous.
Hmm.
Um, are you, are your questions sufficiently answered, Mike?
Uh, it is, as long as they're, as long as they're looking into it and the rumors are just kind of that rumors.
Uh, I can ask them about it if you want. Uh, I have not heard issues and I know some of, some EMS, like I, I usually talk to their high command, like Happy and Dion, but, um, I, I know some have been, have come to talk to me about other shit too. Uh, no one has. They might just not know they can, some might not know. So I, I'll try to field some questions. I'll let you know if there's any where.
Yeah, that's a, like, like I told you the, uh, the other night, Michael, uh, a lot of them have out of city obligations. And sometimes it just, it all coincides where just nobody can be around to pick up the slack, but, uh, they are still.
But it's the worst.
Yeah, they are still actively hiring as well. I know they have some more trainees that they're, uh, they've just put through, so.
Yeah, all right. Well, that's, I think that's the only thing I had in terms of concerns. I don't have anything to present today.
Honored Chief of Staff.
Uh, have you worked the death penalty legislation with Counter?
Oh, wait, I, I actually, um, let's get Bobby out of here before we go.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. He's been here for this whole time. Sorry, Bobby.
Um, Bobby, what, what, what would you like to talk about?
Hmm, oh, before I get into this, let me hang up this phone call.
Okay.
Yo, Dakota, you're a cop, aren't you, Dakota?
I gave it away.
You're a cop, Dakota, you, you know, all this marijuana talk. I bet you, you wanna marry one of these nuts in your mouth, bitch?
What?
Bobby, what the fuck?
Bobby, get out.
What is this?
Yeah, that, that was the beginning of my speech.
Bobby, get out.
All right, all right. All right, all right.
Maybe next week, Bob. I'm sorry, man.
Everything he does is an actual waste of time. It's just, he is an actual mistake.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, somebody should have swallowed him.
Amen. True.
Damn.
All right, uh, continue.
Death penalty legislation, uh, it is a little bit further down. Sorry, everybody. It's report three, five, eight, two. Took out the death coliseum. Sad.
As cool of an idea as it was, yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Counter and I like kind of spitballed, worked through some things and just to make sure that doctors are able to do what they need to do. Um, uh, reworked that, but Counter did have the great idea of keeping, you'll see, have a look at it.
Where is it?
Uh, it's report three, five, eight, two. It's just titled death penalty. It's a little bit further down in reports.
Oh, this might be a tougher one to push for, but give it a chance, guys.
Uh, essentially just establishing, right, um, different uses of capital or different, um, methods of capital punishment for when, uh, the death penalty has been advocated by the judiciary. Um, and I know in the past we had firing squad and lethal injection. Now obviously firing squad's gonna be a little bit, well, we talked about this last time, all but impossible given the current state of the DOC. Right? As far as in prison goes, um, Counter and I spitballed and kind of worked this out instead. Um, of having public executions except for lethal injection. Thoughts, comments, concerns?
The firing squad would be primarily cops because obviously they, you know, have firearms training. Uh, but then there, there's all, there's the other part in there. Just you guys go for it.
I'm against any public execution. Let's be real. It's gonna be a big old shit show. That's there, there is a reason they've been done in prison in the past and it wasn't just because it was the prison.
Yeah, someone's just gonna run up with six of their boys and shoot all the cops. I mean, what are you? And, I, I hate to be the negative Nancy, but.
Oh, god damn, they're gonna ruin the dramatics. God damn.
I've literally seen them go really bad.
Impossible for those kinds of things to be held in public, as Maltin said, there are very good reasons for that.
I, I, I'm more than welcome to have the death penalty.
Let me hear this out. Instead of the Vine Wood Bowl, right, for viewable tickets, what about the third floor courtroom behind the metal detectors?
Yeah, and then we can have the janitors clean up the brain matter. Yeah, well, shoot all, shoot, let's shoot a bunch of holes in city hall. I'll, I'll pass.
Oh, god.
I, I, I'm against it being in city hall just because I believe, uh, that, that should not be the purpose of city hall. Like I said, I'm, I'm all for the death penalty. I just think.
Give a suggestion?
Yeah, the basement of the police station. Like, I, I don't give a fuck where, where it is. It's just like do it Stalin style for all I care. Like reopen grape C P D, like.
Not a bad idea.
Stalin style was not on the list of things I thought here today.
Yeah, this, my bingo card is really getting outrageous.
Uh, you're right. So like that, that's penalty. Yeah, sure. Some people just deserve to die. Public, absolutely not, but a secured facility where it could be, uh, monitored by PD for like entry and for them to actually do the business and we know nothing's gonna happen. Yeah, I'm, I'm all for that. Location, you know, TBD, I, I would say a, a police station since the prison is, is out of commission is, is the logical next step for that.
Okay, that's understandable. Uh, that's a great one too.
That's a great one. You should slough it in there.
Burnt at stake on here and I'm just saying, if, if I was ever put to death, I'd wanna be burnt at stake publicly. So I'm voting for what I want.
Nope, Catcher and I would both wanna be burnt at stake.
Whatever method that i- is deemed to fit by, by law, but yeah, that, that's, that's my only stipulation is it has to be a secured facility.
That makes sense.
Okay, so if it was on the bottom of MRPD, could, could we get a video camera in there and, and, and live stream it? I'm just saying.
I'm fine with viewing qualities. I have nothing against that. Yeah, I have nothing against that. Just people can't be there who aren't, uh, approved or.
That's fine, but I think we should be able to make money off of that because death row inmates take up a lot of state resources and I think that we should be able to make some of that money back.
Yeah, so, you know, it was, uh, set up a GoPro and yeah, sell, sell the streaming tickets to that. That's fine.
Okay.
You know how sad Bobby and Carmine are gonna be that you took away their like ultimate freedom? What do you mean?
Oh.
Previously, they would just get to actually murder the person in prison.
Well, they could still do that before we get our hands on them.
Yeah, but you know, people, people get really good medical care around here. They rarely die, you know? Imagine.
We, we got the best medical, best medical system in America.
Not at the prison.
That's what I'm saying.
Lucky, okay, fairness.
Now that, they should sell tickets too. I'd pay to watch Bobby Charles brain somebody.
Um, okay, is that a good, is that a middle ground you guys want where they, they have to do it in a public area of the prison and sell tickets? What about something like that?
How's the doctor gonna declare time of death?
They'd have to be taken out of the prison.
Yeah, they'll throw them on the ground like they do with the people right now for EMS.
Oh, my god.
Well, let them do that, but only in this one case when they actually did.
Imagine the scene Bobby Charles wielding a baseball bat is just dragging this body behind him. And he tosses it outside of the gates like trash and just walks back into the prison. Uh, dragging the baseball bat on the concrete.
The only thing I'll say is if we were worried about people interfering, if they did it in the prison, aren't we sort of inviting that?
Other issue with that is also if, uh, the standing policy is, uh, DOJ or sorry, the prison i- is a legislative black hole. We're kind of pushing that envelope by now legislating some things that are gonna be happening in there.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that we, we legislate them. I'm saying it just happened.
If, if you're wanting the, the death penalty to be, well, you're just never getting out of prison, uh, you know.
And if Bobby and Carmine kill you, then you die. Is that, is that it? That's pretty good.
That's not, that's not as far as I was going, okay?
Well, I know, I think that is a perfectly fine workaround. I, I just would not be comfortable with, uh, passing something that says death penalty is allowed and it's up to Bobby and Carmine how that is. I, I would just go as far as, uh, you've been sentenced to death, therefore, uh, you're never getting out of prison, uh, you know, Bobby and Carmine, hey, they're, they're all yours now.
Is this like the, uh, what happened to Axel Justice? We just give them a camera and give them the person and say.
Oh, my god, yeah.
Say livestream it.
That's actually horrible.
Yeah, this is, this is getting in the crazy shit.
Crazy there? Yeah, no, you're right.
Let Mayor go.
Well, it's a good question.
I, I also wouldn't mind just sticking it to Bobby and Carmine because, uh, you know, who gives a fuck about them and yeah.
Shortly.
True.
I'd, yeah, it's a tough one. I, I love the dramatics of everything we're coming up with wrong, but it is a little difficult to figure out how to do it. Maybe.
Well, the thing is, it's just because we can't have nice things in the city.
No, you're not wrong. Yeah, like.
Somebody's gonna have to make it about them.
Still, yeah, they'll just come shoot a bunch of people or something. So maybe, um, I don't know, maybe maybe we table it and continue to think, because there's gotta be a fun dramatic way, right? That people are gonna fuck over. There's gotta be some way.
I, I think if we, we could legislate the death penalty now, like I, I think that, that's a good thing for this council could do while we're sunsetting basically. And you know, the, the how and why could always be done at, at a later date.
Later date? Okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's perfectly. Yeah, I I think it's perfectly prudent, shall we say, to get on the books like, yeah, there is a death penalty and until further notice, uh. You know, it's gonna be uh Dakota taking you to the basement and and putting one in the back of your head like.
My god. Well, the current idea. Oh boy, this is, this gets really morbid. The current idea uh is essentially just give them to Bobby and. Carmine and and legislate and that looks very bad. So maybe we just leave it off the books until we come up with a plan.
Uh but anybody would like to spitball.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah.
If anybody would like to spitball, you know, review this, go over ideas, brainstorm uh with like Hunter or myself at all this week, please do let us know.
Yep.
Yes, I'll definitely uh I'll definitely keep thinking on it because I'm all I'm all here for the dramatics. I'm just saying, if someone's gonna be put to death, they should be put to death in style. I think we're doing the best for these people, so.
I agree. I don't mind taking it from, I honestly don't mind taking it from Bobby and Kyra Mine because that was one of the great joys of the PD as well in the past.
I I I think you could do plenty of style in in the PD garage. It's also big enough for audiences, dramatics, flair, etc. It's still also typically the lowest floor.
Have the ability to control who's there, yeah.
Out after when they're burned at the stake.
Yeah. Um. That was all I have.
We're getting quick with this. Look at that.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hi there.
Welcome back.
I'm alive. Did you guys finish your uh discussion on the death penalty?
Yeah, I think we're uh tabling it.
Okay.
We gotta come up with a good plan, but right now it's still just as is.
Everything else you'd like to present?
None this time, no.
Okay, uh my turn.
Yay.
Let's re- let's repeal adoption fraud.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh.
Why the change of heart?
Why the change of heart? It's because I got to sit down. In my meditative spot. And gaze out across the hills and trees and. Cities, uh skyline, skyscrapers. Hands behind my back. In silent contemplation and I saw. People roaming about the city, crossing like ships in the night. Never speaking to each other, but living their lives independent of anything that we ourselves. Saw fit to legislate. And I knew, deep down. The mayor, well, the mayor is the will of the people. And is it truly in the best interest of the people of Los Santos? To tell them how that they're how they're supposed to live and behind closed doors or even out in public? Is it truly the prerogative of the mayor's office? To try to tell them that they cannot. Look at another adult, probably only a couple of years in difference in age and say. Hello, son. And to have that son look at the at at the the adult in this adoption relationship and say, hi daddy. I love you. I just want people to live free and happily. And that's why I want to repeal adoption fraud. It should have never existed.
So you'd be repealing ev- everything about it, like no more of like the the filing, no more, just just like it was.
Everything.
Beginning.
Everything.
Everything.
The adoption policy and the charge for adoption fraud, all gone.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it 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 just, it's not that, look, at the end of the day, uh if people wanna LARP like their uh, you know, family. Uh I don't really give a shit. I kind of came to that realization. Uh and you know, it's it's not really. Helping anybody, so it should go. It should leave. Uh so I moved to repeal adoption fraud in its entirety. Uh any nays?
Uh I I have a question.
Sure.
Will the people who have already paid to adopt somebody be reimbursed?
I would say no.
Hold on.
Okay.
Um. Not many people paid to do it, so I would be willing to uh pursue uh refunding the people that actually did pay in the system. Uh it's probably only like. Shit, like. Like, like three or four people, maybe?
It looks like more than that if I'm reading the document right now.
How many?
Son of a bitch.
Oh.
What?
Uh Mr. Mayor, can I talk to you outside for a second?
This is confusing.
Huh.
Huh, yeah.
I'm chewing this moment over with the Twix. Please don't ask me questions. Can I borrow, can I can I borrow your Zippo lighter? Can I? Can I? Come on?
Can you borrow my Zippo?
Yeah, can I? Come on. Alright, okay, cool. Alright.
Hands a Zippo lighter.
Grab Zippo. Lights up.
Lights up, alright.
Perfect, alright. Hansu Zipper later back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh does anybody have any fun plans for tomorrow?
Uh I'll be honest, didn't know it was Easter until this morning. Uh as as festive as I look. Uh so probably just continuing to look cute and showing people my outfit and that's about it. We'll go buy some chocolate.
Uh okay, any nays for repealing adoption fraud in its entirety?
No, I think this is a great idea.
Same. I as I just wanna clarify, I I guess it doesn't matter. I'm I'm for either way, but are are people getting their money back?
Uh we can discuss that after we vote on repealing it.
Just give them a coupon code to the mayor's office.
A coupon code?
Okay, alright, yeah, yeah, for the just the repeal itself, yeah, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I was on the edge from or on the edge of it from the start. I had so so fuck it, yeah.
Unanimously.
Grew to love it, but yeah.
Unanimously repealed. Uh good. More freedom. Hooray.
Sure, fuck it.
Let's discuss, uh so how many people, uh I can't see this document, uh so. Uh actually, have they have they been filling it out in the uh actual report?
Yes, they have.
It's been up last time, March twenty fifth. Wait, was it twenty fifth? It might even be more recent.
What's the uh report number?
It is report three, four, eight, three. It's actually created by you, it says, so you should have access to it.
Yeah.
It got moved into the.
If we moved it to a section that he doesn't then.
Okay, okay, okay.
Uh so how many uh how many people in there?
One, two, three. Oh, yes, I can, I can.
It's eleven adoptions as of now.
Wait, can I share it in here? I thought we had to be. Actually, you know what? Never mind. I can do this. Hold on.
Uh we can, we can. Uh do ten K for each of them. Some of them were probably twenty-five K adoptions, but the, you know, we changed it to ten K and then probably some extra people went in. Um it's not really. Uh taking money from the state. Because that money was, i- it's essentially equivalent exchange, right? We're giving, we're just gonna give them their money back. Um and I I mean, I can help you take care of that, Etta, or uh you can take care of it yourself, whatever you wanna do.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, uh let me speak up. Uh it, no, that's fine. Yeah, you can ha- you can all direct them to me and then I can get it all taken care of.
Okay, um yeah, you guys wanna do a a time limit on reimbursement so you're not randomly having to worry about this later? Okay.
Yeah.
Uh okay.
Couple of weeks, I guess, or a month?
Yeah, we'll give them a month. Fuck it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, cool. Uh well, I don't really have anything else. Uh which would probably bring us to the conclusion of our meeting unless anyone has anything that they've just remembered last minute.
Uh there was the. Question about the uh pardon in um. Do we wanna just talk about that after the meet and crane?
Which one?
Uh Eddie Rollins, was that it?
That's an appeal. We can talk about that now if you want.
Sure, fuck.
Ooh, the upper the tunnel one?
Yeah, I mean, uh if we're gonna hear it. Uh then we'll convene three of us to go hear it, but I'll sort of tell you what the situation is and we can see if you guys wanna take this up or not. Because we have the the option of just summary judgment and just deny the appeal. Uh so uh there was a case filed on the docket that was related to a gentleman being arrested. Uh robbing HVAC equipment off of the roof of uh the old courthouse and uh Abe Milton Fire and Police Station. Uh so the gentleman was arrested for felony trespassing uh and some other charges. Uh and the lawyer is contesting the idea of it being felony trespassing because he's claiming that uh. Uh it is not a government building.
But.
So essentially, he's saying that.
Okay.
His his niche argument is that uh and I'm gonna try to present this in the most fair light possible. His his argument is that. The sky bridge that connects the two buildings. Uh does not make them conjoined or subject to the same regulations. And his belief is that the uh signage all over the police and fire station. Is not sufficient to put people on notice that the old courthouse is also considered a government building.
What what building? Is is the courthouse in the northwest part of the city?
Correct, uh.
That's Boulevard de Perro in the east.
Yes, Abe Milton. No, 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 Abe Abe Milton and Carcer.
Carcer, okay.
Yeah, so uh essentially the claim is that that uh. Charge is inappropriate because it's not a government building. Uh the lawyers and representatives from both sides uh did not respond in a timely manner to the docket. Uh the lawyer uh came to a uh. A very uh heady moment where he posted on the docket and requested summary judgment. Uh I discussed with the other judges and provided summary judgment. So I informed him that it was in fact a government building. Uh his client's ignorance of that matter uh was not an excuse of the law. And uh even if his client's ignorance was an issue, there is enough constructive notice considering the ladders you have to use to climb up to the old courthouse. Are literally right across the street from a tons of signs that say fire and police everywhere and no trespassing and there's actually guys standing there. Uh I said, even if ignorance was an excuse, I don't uh agree with you. So uh he then immediately appealed my decision to myself with two of you. Uh so it is up to you guys uh how to proceed. We can convene a panel, hear the arguments in full in court. Or we have the option to summary judgment either way, either confirm me or reverse me or whatever.
At the risk of sounding uh, let's just say like trash or whatever, like if they didn't respond to the the docket posting, does the the person even care? Like, why is this going this far if they didn't even make it to court to the first place? Like, why did why did the it get summary judgment the first time around?
The lawyer asked for it.
Okay, so the lawyer motion for summary judgment on the first one and I was getting appealed because they didn't get the answer they wanted?
Yeah, I was just about to say, they thought for sure they were gonna win and then.
Does the defendant wanna go through all this or is it is this just a lawyer who wants to?
I don't know. I it's not fair for me to speculate on that. I'm just presenting the facts of the matter to you guys independent of any of my own conclusions.
Gotcha. I mean, i- if they were found trespassing on.
There, let's put it this way. Are there two of you who would like to sit on a panel with me and hear that case?
I wanna hear the arguments. We talked about this, Ellen. I want to.
Okay, good, then we will convene and schedule. Sounds good.
Do you want help scheduling?
Uh if you want.
Okay. Sick.
Good luck, Etta.
Oh, boy.
Where's my money, Etta?
Yeah, I'll be meeting with you after class.
Okay, alright, I got you, I got you. So am I, am I just reimbursing the ten K each or is it just the full amount that they paid at the time?
Uh just do ten K, cuz uh I don't I don't know if it's possible to track.
Like, nobody paid uh over ten K.
What about the people who got caught for fraud? What do we say about them?
Oh.
Uh we can't do anything, we can't do anything.
It's like people who got caught for jaywalking before we made it to criminalize.
Yeah, it was still a crime at the time.
Yeah. Yep. I should have followed the law. Fuck it.
Uh uh Twitter is going crazy.
Oh, boy.
No, they can't have separation of church and see it back now. Actually, I would like that. I don't wanna be a forced Mormon.
How much longer do you have on that?
Not that long, eight days. It's fine. I can do anything for eight days.
Oh, yeah, you you pitched something about uh outlaw Mormonism. Uh I'm on board, just so you know. If you ever wanna, I'm all in on that.
Table that for now.
Okay, okay, just let me know.
Uh Win Song wants her adoption fraud reimbursement. It's like, okay, well, no. It, you still committed the crime at the time.
I mean, I guess she could try to appeal on that basis, but yeah, she's not getting it automatically.
No, you don't win an appeal on that basis.
Yeah, no, it doesn't work.
Perfect, yeah.
Ex post facto protects you and hurts you.
You.
There you go. Well, there you are. The judge would tell her no.
Alright. Counter, can I just ask you real quick? What's your?
Uh yeah.
What's your court availability? Actually, you know what? Something tells me I think I can figure that out.
I'm I'm pretty available.
Okay, alright.
I have no laugh, it's fine.
Korean after four PM PST on weekdays?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, um does anybody else have anything else? Are we good to go?
Uh I think we're good.
I think we're good.
Is everyone just on Twitter right now?
I'm being blown the fuck up, so.
Oh my god, I'm so sorry.
No, no, it's fine, it's fine.
I'll just retweet you throughout the day consistently.
Well, alright, then, uh Dakota, can we go handle some business real quick?
Uh yeah, sure.
See you all next week.
Alright, okay.
Oh no, I retweet the wrong one. Well, here we are.